The car break. The car break, the spurs open.
I'm gonna call this meeting of the Rundle Planning Board to order as soon as I can get the rest of the planning board to stop talking.
Can't hear you, Ed.
It's okay, you guys keep going, we'll wait. Today's August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, we're in the municipal meeting room, it is seven P M. We have a roll call from the far end.
Uh, Lee J Felton, uh, town planner.
Marty Kane.
Susan Senate.
James Lowery.
Paul Green.
Tom McGinn.
Susan Roth.
Rich Canong, I'm the chairman. We have before us approval of the agenda. Approval of the minutes for August first, two thousand twenty-three. We have a time for public comment. Under pending business, we have Eschbach's storage facility, a conditional use application. And then we have two items of new business, a Rundle keep, a Rundles keep a subdivision amendment, which we are going to have to table. At this point, the applicant has not turned his paperwork and he has it ready and it'll be, it will have it for the next meeting, but. We don't have it right now. And then seven eighty-two Alfred Road LLC, a site plan review pre-application. Then we'll have other business and a town planner report and we'll all go home.
Make a motion, we accept the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Paul Green, seconded by Tom McGinn, any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I abstain.
Okay. The Marty Kane is abstaining?
I'm abstaining because I wasn't here.
Oh, no, no, that's for tonight's meeting.
Oh, oh, oh.
For tonight.
I thought it was the minute.
No, no, that's for tonight's meeting, so you agree to the agenda?
Yeah.
It is unanimous. We have approval of the minutes from August first, two thousand twenty-three. You have them before you.
Me too.
Make a motion, we accept the minutes as written?
I'll second that.
Set motion made by Paul Green to accept, seconded by Susan Roth, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Have six in favor and one abstention.
Two abstentions.
Two abstentions. Three abstentions. There were only four ever seen there?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that, guys. It was so long ago, I can't remember it. The next item is public comment. And this is that time in the meeting when if you are in the public and have a. Comment to make about an item that is not on the agenda. Now would be the time to say, say something. But since everybody here is an applicant, I don't think we have that issue. I do need to make a recommendation for everybody on the board, the selectmen want us to. Turn our mics on and lean forward and speak into the mic because it's not getting recorded and they're getting lots of complaints about the fact. People will watch the video and they cannot hear it.
Okay.
Okay. Pending business. Eschbach Storage Facility, a conditional use application. Tax map twelve lot six A in the B I zone at twenty-three sixty-five Portland Road. A proposal to construct an indoor climate controlled self-storage facility, including a front building. One hundred and twenty by two hundred and ten square foot. And the rear building of one hundred by two hundred and ten. Both buildings will have four floors of storage units. The property owner is Elland our Family Holdings LLC, represented by Ryan Eschbach and Ryan McCarthy of Tidewater Engineering. Gentlemen, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board. My name is Brian McCarthy of the Tidewater Engineering, here with the Alex again, Elland our family holdings. Uh, for the indoor storage facility located at point three sixty-five Portland Road and down at point eight one. Um, here with me is the United at five, the L Y F Architects. Behind you is the call in more than Tidewater and then we are Ryan Eschbach. And we. Uh, so last time we were here was back in October, um, for reapplication or set plan expansion. Overall, the layout is pretty much stayed on the technical from what's been presented to you before, um, we've taken it to the next step. And the whole design on the site, utilities, normal, and so forth along with the architect. This is, uh, not the traditional indoor, uh, not the traditional storage facility where you have a broad door or on the outside of the building. In New York, we'll make climate control facility. Uh, that means you would be entering into the, into the building from exterior doors, going to the elevator and going up to the different floors and accessing your units from the inside. Uh, the site will be composed of two different buildings, the front building and the back building, the front building is different from the back building. Because it had an office space for customers trying. Uh, to the site that will are in front of the building, enter the office, inquire, um, storage facility or storage units. Uh, the other difference is the front building has drive-through, so, um, this is a little bit unique to storage facilities where. Customer diving testing the property has the choice to drive into the building with their vehicles, trailers, moving vans. However, they have some of the property to unload their personal. Their personal property in that building outside of the building. So in the meantime, they don't have to be frightened. Weather, rain, um, ice and so forth, they can enter in and they'll have access to the elevator. Um, back building a lot. Front building is about a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and ten feet, back building will be a little bit smaller, one hundred feet by two hundred. Uh, there are four floors for the building. So at the end of the utilities. Will be, probably be serviced by a utility building, not a main subject system. Uh, we will be connecting to the town, to the A W Water District's water main, twenty-one, twenty inch. Um, we'll have separate services for the fire services that go into the building and for the domestic water. Um, creating underground utilities for electric communications, so we'll be talking about the portable air line from our side of the road. Going underground, the grid former, then, uh, be right. The stormwater on the site has been designed to meet that five hundred standards, we would be. Uh, so all of, you know, ninety-five percent of the runoff probably is targeted services from this property. Will be collected rather than to the future and, uh, small water stations. One more motivation for the front half of the property that behind the third building. And the runoff from back at the property goes over this different small one base, uh, to the back. Uh, runoff that goes there will be treated, it will be a hundred exposed open, so when you run off, it will permeate down through that spoilage, it will be reflected by under grains. And then we, uh, definitely do the rest itself. Uh, we have submitted a stormwater permit to D E P, uh, that's currently being processed, uh, we've had some feedback from them, there are just a couple minor comments, but. From my understanding, it's in process, so we're anticipating, um, to receive approval from the Stormwater Permit. Before September fifteenth. That's their standard for a deadline, but we're hoping to get it. As far as lighting goes, there will be only building mounted lights, there won't be any full lights on this property, the lights will be both cut off and the lights will be avoided. Um, in the plans, and you'll see spec sheets for the fixtures, that will be about buildings. And there's also a plan that shows that, um, none of the light from will go over. Landscaping, uh, we have wood burning company, they provide a landscape, you can see right here. Being managed, you can, it's going to demonstrate that I maintain as much of the forest is, um. The mature forest on this property is a natural operating property. Uh, so the, the clearance for the building is, in the stormwater, uh, facility that is limited to only that. Uh, so around all four sides, the sides of the back property, we have natural. The front of the property, front of the building, about one, you know, it works, you can, you can, only this gets rid of the rain, stormwater system. Uh, so we propose five American trees, three trees, if, if the park. We've also proposed a, a landscape that there is shrubs and plants and in front of the office. And, uh, and then also to screen the transport. Um, we have received at this point, uh, approval for main D O T, the driveway entrance. And then signage, I can't even go over signage, but we, we're only going to be doing the building amounts in signage, there will be a separate, a whole amount of the sign. Any other members, what I have, I'm asking, okay?
Good evening, my name is Ken Fire, owner of L Y F Architects, I'm speaking up, bringing my company. We'll briefly go over the, the building architecture. As Ryan, either the building, first building, either the sports courts, uh, five hundred thousand rolls per feet. It has an office area, uh, for patrons. Push the little button, so all, uh, now people leave.
There we go, again, my name is Ken Fire with L Y F Architects. And. The first building, um, along the road is four stories, um, approximately a hundred thousand square feet. And contains approximately four hundred and fifty storage units. Um, it also has the drive-through, um, to allow patrons to, um, unload their vehicles. Um, outside the weather and we have multiple elevator locations. Um, for folks to get up to the upper levels of the, of the building and we also have, um. Two entries, um, that people can park on the outside of the building and get into the building. Um, on each of the longsides and then we have, um. Two entries, one entry on each end, um, besides the main, main office area entry. Um, each of these buildings is fully sprinkled, um, with NFPA thirteen sprinkler system. It's also constructive, non-combustible construction, it's going to be steel and concrete and metal panel. Um, this here is the typical upper floor, um, a lot of storage units. And then on the roof. Um, we are proposing, uh, several large areas of solar panel locations. Um, along with mechanical units and this will all have, uh, roof drains, so it's all internal roof drainage out to Ryan's site drainage. Uh, again, building elevations wise, on building one, we have an entry tower that actually will have the, the sign, um, that will be. Um, approximately one hundred square feet, so it's within your all zoning, um, requirements. Um, and then the building itself is made up of. Uh, split face concrete block and two different types of, uh, gray metal panel, one vertical and one horizontal. And then we actually have a, um, a stucco corner element, which I will have a rendering to show. Everyone as well, we have the overhead doors and then each entry has the, uh, the stucco. Um, entry feature along with a entry canopy. And this is where the vertical siding comes down and there's accent lighting to, to demarcate the locations of the entry. And again, we also have, um, the full cutoff, um, wall-mounted wall packs. So that no light spills out. Or, uh, to the adjacent properties. Again, same elevations. Typical all the way around the building. And these are the perspectives. Um, shown for the, for the building, this is the main entry where we have the actual sign. Um, and the office entry, accent lighting with the gray stucco face, metal panel and split face. Uh, C M U base, uh, and then that same architectural vocabulary goes around the building. Um, the buildings are forty-nine, forty-eight feet to the top of the roof. Um, and then we have a black parapet just around the, uh. The entry. And the second building. Very similar to the first, I have floor plans again, it's all essentially the same. But again, the same architectural vocabulary for both buildings regarding the base, the different types of, uh, vertical and horizontal metal siding. Um, and, uh, entries, there is no drive-through and there is also no entry cube. Um, and there's no sign on this building. And the second building is approximately eighty-four thousand gross square feet with about three hundred and eighty, um, storage units. And with that, that is the architectural portion. Of our presentation, I'll leave that up.
Okay, a couple of other things before, um, we start answering some questions. Uh, there are two other permits that we're waiting on, um, we do have wetland impacts proposed on this property, which requires a tier one wetland permit from main D E P. Uh, that's also currently being processed at the same time as the D E P stormwater permit. Uh, we're also waiting on an Army Corps of Engineers permit for the wetland impacts as well. Um, the, we have received comments from the K K W Water District that stating that they do have adequate capacity. Um, that should have been added to your packets, um, after the fact. Um, and we are still waiting on comments from the fire chief. Uh, we are requesting four waivers, um, we can go over those when. When, uh, applicable. Everybody answer any questions?
If you're ready to go over them now, that would be fine.
Okay, great. Alright, so the waiver requests are for the, the, um. Sections ten, five, two, seven, A for fiscal impact assessment. Um, with the type of facility this is, we're not anticipating any fiscal impacts for additional police, fire, certainly not any additional impacts to your school system. Um, so we're asking for a waiver on, on that study. The second one is ten, five, two, seven, B for traffic impact assessment. Um, in your package there, we do have an initial traffic assessment to demonstrate, um, how many trips we'd have in a peak hour and the maximum number of trips per day. Um, with a storage facility, uh, the amount of traffic generated from. These type of facilities is, is very low. If you drive by any other storage facilities, if you look in there, you, you, not very often, you're going to see many cars coming in and out of them. Most people, they'll come, they'll, they'll drop off their, um, personal items, fill up their storage unit and they may not be back for quite some time. So the amount of traffic coming in another site is, is fairly low, um, it's below the threshold to require a main D E P, uh, traffic movement permit or a traffic study from them. So we're also requesting a waiver to, uh, uh, full traffic study from the board. Uh, ten, five, two, seven, C groundwater study, um. Because the stormwater system is, is receiving a stormwater permit from D E P and, and we're treating ninety-five percent of the runoff coming off of the property. Two stormwater basins that actually have an impermeable liner under them to prevent any. Permeation down through to the groundwater, um, we're requesting a waiver from the groundwater study. Um, similarly, we, we're not, we don't have any groundwater drilled wells to, um. To supply to the building, so we're connecting to the town's. Public water main, so there, we don't, we're not drawing water from the ground. And the last one, ten, five, two, seven, D is a market study, um, this property is located in the growth area of the, of the town. In accordance with the comprehensive plan, um, it's there to support other growth that might happen in the town, um. Facilitate that, um, so we, we don't, we're asking for a waiver on the, the market study as well. One thing I do want to point out, um. Is we're likely going to phase the construction of the buildings. So the first building to be constructed would be the front building. Uh, the applicant would still construct all the, the site improvements for the entire property, which includes, um, the, the back. Um, building pad, the, the drive, the parking area and drive access around the back building. And the stormwater facilities associated with it. But we would be, we wouldn't be looking at building the second one until we have, um, an occupancy on the first one and we start to fill that. So the, the, the units on the first building. Happy to answer any questions?
It's very thoughtful. Um, I have a question. Is this, is access to the building twenty-four seven?
It is.
Okay. So there's no gate or anything like that, that people, is there a way?
No.
People can enter and leave without. Having a key card or an.
To get into the building, you'd have to have a keypad, um, and the access codes to get into it, full surveillance around the building, um, from my understanding.
But the property's not gated, so it's not closed.
You can drive in.
Okay.
Yes, you want to do that? So, so the back building, it's not shown on the plan here, but the, the drive between the front building and the back building, there will be a gate there to prevent cars from going to the back building after hours. Is that, that's less visible from route one? So we'd like to keep, keep people who shouldn't be back there, out of there.
Are there any questions related to the waivers?
Not for me.
How do y'all feel about it?
Well, I. I have, um. A little concerned about the market study, especially in light of the fact that there's another very large. Uh, business going right, right across the street that, that's just started, um. Probably would have been the largest. Yeah, for miles, now looks like it'd be the second largest, uh, so I just wonder about, I, I'd hate to see. A recession hit and then just have a big white elephant that's sitting there without, uh. Without being finished or, or being used.
Well, that's what, that's what the, uh, charity bond would cover us on.
Yeah, you're right, Senator.
Oh, I'm sorry. I see, Tom was asking about what happens if, if the building doesn't get complete, that's what this, that's what the charity bond is for. We're going to have enough money. On file to be able to finish the building theoretically.
I'm, I'm. Going beyond just, just building the building, it's just having a vacant building, uh, that, um. Can't compete. Cause of the finance with, with what's going on across the street, so, uh, so just can, uh. Can you address that, is, is, is there a demand for, for all this? Right, just all the storage space, I know that there's, there's a, the whole country, we're all looking for more storage space, but to have this all so condensed, right? Uh, within a couple hundred yards.
Yeah, I, I think the applicant's done a lot of, of legwork studying that to make sure that, that there is, uh, demand for it, um. Strategically, the, this, the, the location of this site is, is close to the line, to the, to the Bitterford line. And there's a lot of growth happening there as well, so with the location of it, they'd be, they'd be accepting customers from both Rundle and the Bitterford side, I think. Um. It's also another reason why we're proposing the phasing of the building, so constructing that first building. Um, and getting the occupancy and starting to fill those units to make sure the demand is there before you spend all the money to build that second building and out back. The other way I've seen this happen, um, for a very similar facility in Kittery is, is when you construct the building, the, the building's going to be fully constructed. Um, but they're going to fill the, the lowest floor first and then once, or maybe the lowest two floors. And then as those fill up, they'll be able to use to, to determine when they're going to finish off the third floor and then the fourth floor. But all, but the entire facility and the, the fire protection measures would all be compliant as a building as a whole. So it'd be a matter of putting up the partitions on the upper floors.
Yeah, that's, that's, our office only does these large stores, storage buildings, uh, when it comes to storage buildings and that's typically how it's done. You build out the first two or three floors, let them get rented and then you go back for another building permit to finish out the top floor. Uh, and then proceed on after that, so it's very, very much a phased, phased approach.
So, so I'm sure you already did, the owner at least did a market study. You, you, you'd have to for something this scale, was, was that other business that's now being built, was that already? Uh, part of your awareness or, but did you know that was going to be going in?
So they, uh. They started, we were pretty much halfway through it, sorry.
We were pretty much halfway through everything when we found out about the compete, you're referring to the other storage facility going in, correct? Yes, we were, um. Made aware of it when we were halfway through our process, but from what I've been told, it's not. Going to be nearly as large and it's not going to be the same business model as what we're doing, theirs is going to be drive-up. Um, one of the things that we did, we started this in April of two thousand twenty-two, uh, we want to do this right, my partners and I. So we joined the Maine Self-Storage Association and I had a meeting up in Rockland, Maine. Uh, it's Swift Storage is the company and the president of the association, his name is Eddie. Talked to him for a good two hours over a cup of coffee and he explained everything to me and. The long and short of it is, he said, at the national meeting about five years ago, they said, we need to stop constructing these, we are saturating the market, we're done, and he says, and every year. We keep building and we keep filling and he's up in, uh, Searsport and Rockland and he's. He can't keep up with the demand in areas as sparsely populated as those, so. I am aware of the economic conditions going on today, uh, and there's a lot of uncertainty, but. In light of the fact that, uh, let me back up to, the other thing Eddie told me is he goes, I'm not a big fan of it, but I. Have to respect the way they perform financially, the multi-level climate control model always destroys the drive-up model. He said, so I know if that's the route you guys are going to be going in a Rundle, you're going to do just fine, even when there's economic uncertainty, the way he described it is he said. The two businesses he's seen through his thirty years of doing this are. That are not recession-proof, but about as recession-resistant as it gets as apartment complexes and storage facilities, so. Take it with a grain of salt, but when we did our homework, those were the things that we learned and that's why we felt comfortable going forward with this project.
Right, well, thank you.
No problem.
Uh, Jamie?
Question? Yeah, um, can you walk through the, um, access and parking and maneuverability around, especially the rear building?
Certainly. Just switch it's over to the. Okay, so vehicles coming in off of route one, um, they'll immediately will be circulated to the right. Um, the parking spaces for the office will be right in front of them, so they'll have immediate access to that office space to figure out what unit they're going to and how to get there. Um, for, for new customers, customers who know where they're going, they'll immediately be able to drive around the building. And into the drive-through bay here, so we've widened this out so that the moving vans have the turning radius to. To swing wide and come in through the drive-through bay. We've also aligned this drive-through bay so that coming out of the building, it's lining right up with the, the exit lane of the driveway here. Um, you can continue around the entire building, this provides fire access, uh, we've got thirty-foot radiuses around, around the outside. We've done, um, we've looked at turning templates for larger vehicles. To be able to get around all four sides of the front building and then also the rear building. Reason why we didn't put the drive-through bay on the back building is because that would have had to widen out. The area, both front and back, be, to be able to turn into that lane and then to turn out of that lane. Which would end up, um, creating more impacts to the wetland on, on, above the property here. Um, the fire truck should be able to ma, have no problem making it around all four corners of the building. Now, we do have bollards at the corner as well, just to make sure. That, uh, to protect the corners. Uh, people who are going to access the building to drop off, um, their products are going to park in the hatched areas that are tight to the building. Um, with the doors, there's on all four sides of the building, they're going to pull off to the side there and come into those doors on the outside, maintaining, um, clear access around in the outer lane.
So assuming that would be one way around the rear building?
Um, you, you know, we haven't designated it one way or two ways, um, it's, we can.
I guess my, my envisionment would be park, people would be parking, parallel parking essentially.
Yes.
Along the side of the building, which would reduce the thirty down to twenty. Or eighteen roughly. So would be fairly tight with anything that's larger or a trailer or anything like that if it was two-way.
Yeah, so we, we don't intend it to be two-way, I think you make a good point that we'd have a, a counterclockwise circulation designated for both buildings.
That was my question, um, because in the, especially in the back building and even in the front one, if you have a trailer or a moving truck that's not pulled into your bay. And you have it parked on the side and loading and going to their specific thing, you're blocking, you're, you're rather large against the building, so. Seeing that there's no designated parking spots except the ones right in the front. Um, and then you say, oh, clear for fire trucks, but not if there's a, something there, that's what I'm, uh, that's only my only question. Um, and if there's not direction of traffic, then that could be a problem moving around. My other question, you were saying lighting, which is great that it does not infect. Moving around. My other question, you were saying lighting, which is great that it does not infect. Um. The neighborhood and 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 because they're direct packed and stuff, and I was looking at the lighting um. On the parking area and the doors and they're specifically lit up really well, is that good for enough for your safety and for your um security and things like that? Or you have enough lighting? Around for those things since they are not seen from the okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Going back to your first question, um, it's unlikely that people coming to unload um to their. Onto a cart and bringing it into their storage unit to park. In these spaces here. These are really designated for people who are stopping and going to the office. Most everyone else is gonna pull over into those designated lanes with the hatch marks um closest to whatever door. Their unit is near or the elevator is near to go up to their units.
Okay, but again, because it's a twenty-four hour building. I'm just saying in regard to like if someone's unit is near the office, above the office, and I'm just saying in regard to that, I was just. Curious on parking aspects for that, and since it's it is a twenty-four act twenty-four hour access building. Um, and how you're monitoring people going in with their cars and parking, you know, going inside the building. That's my question for the darkness. Because it is quite dark back there.
Right, right. So the the lights, the lights cover that um and then the security, the surveillance system. And the keypads that that will prevent people from entering the building.
I have one more question. Oh, you you I was just gonna ask you, what's the leasing? Arrangement, so if someone wants to come in and lease a stor- storage space. Are there uh long-term leases? Uh, are they all short-term? Uh, can the units be combined to create? Bigger storage space and. I was just thinking, if you didn't build out the third or the fourth floor, you could. Potentially have a corporate client that would take an entire floor and lease that or. Um, is there any flexibility in terms of how you're? Planning on leasing the space if you find. You don't need as many smaller storage units that you can take on. Uh, large larger responsibilities in terms of storage from corporate entities as well as individuals. So.
So as far uh, just to make sure I answer your question properly, you're asking the actual. Interaction that the customer will have when they want to rent out a faci- a space, correct?
Well, I just. Are they long-term? I mean, are are they year leases? Does? If I wanted to come and lease space from you, would I, what's the shortest term? That you would anticipate that you would actually lease a space to someone for?
So we're offering month to month. Um, we will also offer. The ability to get a discounted monthly rate if you sign up for, say, a six-month period or a twelve-month period. Um. When they log into, a lot of this is gonna be done online as most storage facilities are operated that way these days. Uh, one of the benefits of joining the Maine Self-Storage Association, I learned was that uh Maine actually has the best in the country. Laws when it comes to self-storage, so we are actually using the lease. That was written by the attorneys for the Maine Self-Storage Association. Our storage software is called Storeable. That is what the customer will interact with on our website when they click and say, hey, this is the space I need. And then they sign up, they agree to the terms of service and whatnot, and they'll have the option at that point to choose month to month. Do they want to do a six-month lease, a twelve-month lease? So that's how they'll have the option to determine that. And then as far as a corporate uh renter on the third or fourth floor. Um, that was not something we considered. However, we're always open to. Any and all opportunities if it makes sense for us financially. I do have a. Our annual board meeting is coming up on September seventh that I'll be flying out for, so it is something I could bring up to the partners for discussion at that point.
I just thought it was an interesting.
Absolutely.
That you could take have somebody who takes half a floor or an entire floor.
Yeah.
Which is common, I think, in large storage spaces like this. So. That would sort of take the pressure off of having to lease a lot of small spaces.
Right.
Go ahead.
Few questions, um, but could you uh address like snow removal? The what would? Would you just be plowing and pushing to the side? You would you remove it from the site?
Yeah, so we've designated snow storage um locations around the property.
Uh, where would that be? I didn't I didn't catch that one.
Should be right on the site plan C three in your packet. So. If we're looking at the front building here, we've got snow storage along the two sides. Uh, we're not allowed to do snow, snow storage in the stormwater ponds, basins themselves.
Yeah.
Um, because they could, they could have a, they could. Detriment the the soil filter. Um, and then same thing on the back building, we've got snow storage on the two sides here.
Okay, good. Thank you. Um, the other is uh with trash removal, we have. Um. Internal or ex- external. Uh dumpsters, who would that work?
Um, President, there there is no dumpsters. You can't dispose of your stuff. Um, in any dumpsters or any trash. It's really just office uh trash. So it'd be on a. On the localized internal level of just the office area.
If if I brought some stuff over there and. Five years later, my wife said, we gotta trash it all. Uh, what would I have to cut that all off?
One eight hundred get junk.
Okay. All right, that takes care of that problem. I'll tell my wife that.
I have a question, as I always do, in regard to um ADA compliance and things like that. Um, looking at your um depiction. It looks like there's a step up or at least as a design of it, it's just a, so I'm just curious how your door is gauged for someone who's either in a wheelchair or requires some assistance. And also looking at the plans itself, the storage unit doors, are they bays? Are they doors? What are they? In other, in other words, for someone to access if they have a wheelchair or a scooter.
So all the doors are accessible, um every single one um. Graphically, there's a base to the stone. But that does not carry to the doors. Um, so every door is accessible. There are carts, so that is needed. Um, elevators are provided, they're large um elevators, so accessible to every single. Every single floor and then. Um, for the bay, for the actual storage units themselves, they're overhead, overhead doors um that you end up locking. So. So yes, everything is ex- every single one will be accessible.
Including the bathrooms?
Including bathrooms, yes.
Because it's looking at the pictures and I'm just saying there's no, because I have no dimensions, so I'm just like.
Yes, they, yes, they are. They are all the bathrooms, the bathrooms on the ground floor in this in the uh front building.
Okay, thank you.
Now, are most of the units all the same size? Or can you combine one unit into two units to make a larger one?
So. Um, well, I'll tell you first, so that there's a mixture of units, they are um. They are modular, so we have a mixture of five-by-fives, eight-by-tens, ten-by-fifteens, and ten-by-twenty's. Um, and there is a mix on the floor. Um, typically, when, once they are built, you cannot actually interchange or expand or contract them. Um, they are metal-walled things, so um it had. When the build-out is happening on one of the floors, it will be a pre-arranged. Layout. Now, if there happens to be a. A large tenant, like on the top floor, it takes half a floor and they'll just, they just want half the floor. Uh, that would have to be known beforehand, uh once when things are going for building permit. So they're not, you cannot expand once the floor plan is set.
Well, I just never know. I mean, you know, if somebody has one unit and then, well. I don't have enough room. Yeah, then and you wanted to be next door to it and.
They may or may.
You may may have to go shuffle.
Yeah, they may or may not need to. Rearrange and talk to management about where their units are located um or upgrade to a unit if they if they expand beyond a ten-by-twenty.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so I I have a couple of questions, one for the board. How do you guys feel about the waivers?
In the area.
Do we want to grant the waivers? Do we wanna? Make them s- do all of the submissions for uh ten-five-seven? They've they've asked us for waivers and it's all four of the items in ten-five-seven.
I I think it's, I don't think it's unreasonable for them to ask. For those waivers and I hate to make the process so onerous just because.
Then make a motion.
Okay, well, I move that we accept the waivers.
I second.
No, we we have to grant the waivers.
Oh, excuse me, I move that we grant the way.
I still second.
Okay, a motion has been made by Susan Roth to grant the waivers and seconded by Su- Susan.
Senate.
There's too many Susans here.
Susan squared. Thank you very much, yeah.
Are there any discussion about it? Any questions? Hearing on those in favor of granting the waivers?
I.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. Now I'm gonna go on to Mike. The one question I have, you say that sign is one hundred square feet?
Yes.
Under the ordinance, you can only have a fifty-square-foot sign as a maximum size. You can have two signs. You're entitled to a hundred square feet of signage, but the maximum size, if you look on. Section six, six, five, three. Number two, maximum aggregate signed for any partial cell not exceed one hundred square feet with no single sign to exceed fifty square feet. She could put up two signs.
I was thinking.
But you can't have one.
Grant them a waiver.
We can't. This 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 is not a waiverable item. It says you shall.
Okay.
Do do this.
If we can get a waiver, we'll uh, we'll let us revisit that, take a look at it and see, see what we can do.
Through the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
We don't have another sized building in this town that size. When you put out sign ordinance, if you remember correctly. I wish I was not in favor of. Uh, the fact is. It never said the size of the building.
I I do remember that, Marty, but the the ordinance says. Signage, maximum signage. It doesn't say it's dependent upon the size of the building. It says this is what you're allowed to have. And at this point, the only option we would have would be to go to, go to the next town meeting. Uh, which would delay them a little bit in terms of getting that accomplished. I think it it may be just as easy to put up two signs, one on each side of that main building. I don't know. That's something that you guys are gonna have to look at and figure out. Other than that, I think we need to do a sidewalk.
I I have uh. Before we get to that, can I comment? First of all, what size is the uh proposed sign? It was the one that's shown on the drawing, it includes a lot of uh extra space around it. Uh, which really should should not be included.
Agree with it. So on the enlarged. Well, they. So on uh A two hundred A, what we did was we actually took the three-by-six by twenty-four-ten. And that was one sign, each individual, like we took that as one individual sign. And then the storage was nine feet by one foot five. So that's how we got our script. We didn't, we didn't put one big box.
Okay.
Around it. We we took the H box and storage. Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thanks.
The other.
Been a good solution.
Yeah, it would have been. I thought maybe it was more than the.
Maybe we could, well, anyway. We have to revisit. So potentially fifty square feet. We have to re- we have to revisit this.
Okay.
And and don't forget, although it is certainly part of the zoning ordinance and certainly part of your purview to look at that. Code officer will review that as well and um he will be the one that will issue the sign permit or not.
And and that is, that is true. That is the code officer's purview, but since it's part of the ordinance.
Oh, absolutely.
We can approve.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Uh, the the other question I had or think a comment anyways is. The maximum height of the building in section six, six, four. Uh, states that its maximum height is fifty feet. I see a parapet is. The the height of the top of the parapet is fifty-four and a half feet. Uh, I think the.
You can answer that, I guess.
I thought we had, I thought we had allowed the parapet.
Um, Ryan, Ryan and um the applicants met with us early on in that and actually raised that very issue. We felt um at least as staff that it's a parapet, it's just a blank wall, there's no, there's no. Habitable space in any way there. It's not enclosed as space and it's just a fascia. Of the building and um violating that fifty-foot. Height limit was not an issue from our perspective because it wasn't a firefighting issue. It wasn't an. Emergency access issue to get people out of there and it was four feet over the limited height.
Right, I believe we had that discussion back in October.
Yes, we did.
Did we? I missed that. Okay, uh, to me, it is part of the building. So whether it's habitable or not, it doesn't doesn't say whether it needs to be or not. It just says maximum height of of the building, principal building and garages. My my take is that's part of the building.
If if you go to the definition of building height, that's where you'll find the language that talks about um. Excluding um uninhabitable spaces or similar structures.
Does it? Okay.
Section three.
Yep.
Page nine.
Page nine, let me, let me just, well, if anybody else has a question, I just take a look at that. Wow.
Yeah, not including chimneys, fires, uninhabitable towers or similar accessory structures.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
I was part of it and that was right.
Yeah, I think that's, that's what we came up with back.
All right, great. So that that answered that question.
And it's a nice design element.
Yeah.
Box.
Yeah, 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 I like having it there.
I move that we accept the application as complete with the um check on the signage.
We need and we need to do a sidewalk.
If the next, I thought the next thing says to set a date, the sidewalk after we deem the application complete.
There was, there was a motion.
That was a motion to.
Now second that.
Motion has been made by Susan Sinnet and seconded by Tom McGinty to deem the application complete. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Sidewalk time, gentlemen and ladies. The next meeting is September.
I wanna say six.
I, yeah, I think it's September sixth.
Uh, right, the day after Labor Day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fifth, day after Labor Day.
Yeah.
I'm not sure I'll be here.
I I won't be around that week.
I will not be there that week. That is the first week of school and I am not going to be able to do that.
So today is.
Fifteen.
We we could do it before then. We, you know, we could, we could do it, you know, next week, the week after.
I could do it next.
Before that day. As long as we can get it accomplished.
Curiosity, how soon do you want to start?
Um, we're gonna want to start as soon as we can. So with the DEP permits and Army Corps ones anticipated in September, we've tried to line this up so that those approvals come in. Um, simultaneously with potential approval from this board.
Yep, uh uh assuming that that we we do a sidewalk and we find nothing that's gonna skew everything, then. That first meeting in September, we would end up holding a public hearing. And. If everything goes well. You'd be cleared.
Do you hope to have it all capped in before the winter?
Say that again.
You hope to have a top on it before the winter?
It's hard to say. Um, you know, there's a lot of clearing that will have to happen. Um, before the winter.
How much ledge do you have around there?
How much what?
Ledge.
There will be ledge removal. Um, well, with the test bits that we did showed. We we excavated down with a a pretty small excavator, a mini excavator. It seemed like they were more. Boulders, like a boulder field here, but we don't know until we really start digging it.
The only reason I'm asking is because. You're two different. Pieces of property along Route one there. There was. Amazingly blasting needed. And then the other one was, it was so hard, it couldn't even. Hammer it and. Blasting was so much out of the realm, they decided to do something different. Have you planned on that contingency if you needed to blast?
Yes, so so with those test bits that made us aware of the ledge that we were gonna encounter, it it. Uh, was taken into consideration with the design and the grading of the site. So the lot of the site will have, will be built up a little bit. So the lot of the site will have, will be built up a little bit. Um, in order um for the stormwater to flow where we wanted to go to the basin. So. There's gonna be a lot more fill brought in than I think ex- then ledge excavated.
Okay, because I'm just trying to give you an insight.
One, one more question. Stormwater erasement. You're, you're building over a pond? On on that second building?
Yeah.
It's, it's not very big, but.
It it's a forested wetland. Most of the year, if you walk through it, you probably wouldn't know that you're going through it.
Okay. It's just on the map. It looks like there's a.
It does look like a pond. I probably have poor choice in color.
Well, no, you could. I was gonna suggest you put fish in there.
So the sidewalk, what day are we thinking about? Can we pull it back to that, please?
Pick a day and make a motion.
Jamie, I make a motion. We do the sidewalk at five o'clock on Tuesday, September fifth.
Second. Motion was made by Paul Green, seconded by Jamie to have the sidewalk on September fifth at five P M.
Now, how much are you gonna have cleared out so that?
Any discussion?
Just I I won't be there, but it's okay.
Okay.
Just. Need four of us?
We need three of us for the sidewalk. Okay. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We have six in favor and one opposed. Thank you very much.
I mean, how much are you gonna have cleared out so that we can?
Yeah, if you could try to stake out where the buildings are gonna be, that would be.
Yeah, we'll stake it out. None of the site will be cleared for a sidewalk. None of the site will be cleared. We can't do any of the tree clearing until.
Like where the roadway is around. Is that gonna be cleared?
Luckily, there's, this site used to have a a single family house on it that was demolished. So there's an existing driveway that everyone can pull off of. It's a looped driveway to to get yourself off of Route one. Depending on how many vehicles there are, I think we can all try to fit in that area.
Okay.
I'm assuming you're going to have the public hearing.
Yes.
That same night, just so I can make sure Ian gives everything set up for.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have the the hub, the public hearing that night. For the public?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion. We have a public hearing in September fifteen.
And I'll second that.
Motion by Paul Green, seconded by Tom McGinn to have the public hearing on September fifth. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Six in favor, one opposed. Okay. We'll look forward to seeing you.
Thank you very much. Hold on, before you guys take off, uh, if there's any ability to put some striping. Signage directional arrows, anything to uh. Depict traffic patterns on the site plan, that would be great. And uh, Lee J, my other thought was to make sure. The fire chief and as he deliberates understands that the hatched areas around the building. Could be subject to vehicles parallel parking there.
Will do. Thank you.
Good. Could I ask, has, we didn't talk about the fire chief as his year reviewed and approved of of this?
You would said, you had said something about the fire chief. Are you waiting for a letter from him or something?
We, we issued a letter to him. We haven't had any comments back.
Okay.
That that's probably one of the more important things is we don't have a big fire department here. So just, just wanna play it safe.
Yeah, we'll make sure we follow up before the next meeting.
Good.
Yeah, we're also starting with this interim chief.
Yeah, it's a, it's a different chief.
To discuss various projects as well, so.
One question I had for the sidewalk, is it um, is it okay if we just stake out the two buildings or do you want other items staked out? That you might be of interest to you?
I think staking out where the buildings is gonna be should be sufficient, don't you, gentlemen?
Yeah, I didn't get it. Could get a general idea of the.
Not to exclude any of the women, but they've already said they're not gonna be there.
I won't be there either, though. Okay, thank you.
That's good now.
Thank you.
Lee J. I think we should put it on the agenda to discuss the size of signs based on the size of buildings. Given Marty's comment about what's happening in Arundel and the fact that buildings are getting bigger, taller. And whatever, it's sort of like the picnic tables that we discussed. For the project on one eleven.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, it's not the time, um.
No, not tonight.
For, but I have started making amendments that will come forward to you for next town meeting and this would be a discussion.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
It might require a couple of workshops.
It might require what?
Paul, I was starting to think you had retired. We hadn't seen you in such a long time. But unfortunately, I couldn't. Okay, seven eighty-two Alfred Road LLC site plan review pre-application. Tax map for lot thirty-two in the A R zone. Proposal for a change of use to an existing two-story office. Storage mortuary building. To a funeral home. Addition of thirty new parking spaces to the existing five spaces. Relocation of the existing entrance on Alfred Road. Matt and Lisa Truah, the property owners. Paul Gadboy is the engineer.
So are we changing that language from funeral home to mortuary?
Just the opposite.
They wanna go from a.
Currently, they're a mortuary. They wanna expand it to become a funeral home.
Okay, so I, I misread that then.
I'm curious. I always thought that building was a commercial cleaning facility. Because that's what we approved of that.
It, it was a commercial cleaning facility. Um, the applicant uh, met with um. Jim and I on several occasions to talk about it from a, a building code requirement. Um, what he uh, initially, and we can get into it if you want during the discussion, but. What he originally proposed as the mortuary, um, the code allowed him to move into that building as it currently is.
Okay.
And the use allows that use in there. Um, the change to funeral home, I mean, I can talk about it a little bit. It's really a building code issue relevant to the square footage. Um, and capacity for um patrons that would be in the structure. Um, the first floor is the only floor that is currently allowed until the building is completely sprinkled, which it has gotten at this time. Um, and so the first floor would be the only use. The second floor could be office space, but cannot have an occupancy load. Um, where visitors and other folks would be allowed to go.
So Lee J, I hate to be a pain in the neck.
You're not.
But the first sentence in the first uh, uh. Paragraph on page one says, the end user has indicated that the use for the property would be a mortuary. And not a funeral home. As noted on the plans.
That's. Correct, except they are now asking to become a funeral. I, I don't wanna muddy the waters. I'm gonna let them do their presentation.
Okay.
But there's, there's an owner of the structure involved who made application for this tonight. Who is different than the actual end user. And so I'm gonna leave it there.
Okay. And I will too.
Is it green? Um, I'm actually the uh, leser of the building from Matt and Lisa True. I do own the funeral uh, mortuary as it's being termed at this time. Um, and it is my intention to use the building as a funeral home on the first floor only. The building is very suitable for that uh, in my experience. And um, that's my intention pending approval from you folks uh, for me to do so. Uh, at this point, the second floor, as Lee J had said, um. Uh, without having the sprinkle system in place, uh, it would only be strictly used for office space. I don't need it to operate a funeral home. The first floor has plenty of space uh, for uh. The, for what I would need and currently for what uh, funeral service is calling for.
So I I can expand a little bit more for you on that in that um, when we met that, met with the applicant, Mr. Dobson. Um, the difference is that as a mortuary, um, he is only preparing the bodies. Um, and then they're usually taken elsewhere um, for, for um, visitations or whatever. Um, some family is going to do um, with the body versus a funeral home. Where the body would be shown, it would um, be um, having gatherings and the like. So the difference really is just preparation of the body versus preparation and visitations. Um, and the visitation becomes the occupancy load issue. Um, that was initially the concern with his, with his use and. And the um, building code allowances and actually septic system allowances, but we've got the septic system issue under control.
Okay.
So I'm curious, DJ, given that. Uh, in the, in section six point seven, Arundel, Al- Alfred Road Business District. We do not list either mortuaries or funeral homes in permitted or conditional uses. So I'm kinda curious as to how you and Jim came up with. Uh, how you would classify this?
They might put it service business related.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
That's right.
Hold on. What's it related to?
We don't know what we're gonna give it to this upper conversation. It's been a very complicated issue to work around, so.
I I might add nowhere in a town of Arundel is there a funeral use. I checked every zone. Yeah.
But we do have something that that says that if it's not expressly allowed, it's explicitly prohibited.
Hold on.
Well, no, so it's not allowed anywhere in town.
And that's.
That's right.
Yeah.
Not allowed to die.
Right.
You cannot die in a rundle.
That's the first thing I, that's the first thing I looked at is it's permitted use in another zone, but it's not permitted anywhere in Arundel.
I know, but I, I, and my question, I, I'm sure that Lee J and Jim. Found something in here that says this would qualify it.
It's in the definition section and I just can't remember where the, which definition fell under. But there is an actual definition in the section that talks about funeral.
I don't believe they have a definition. I looked at, I tried to.
Not a direct definition of funeral home, but it's mentioned within the, I think it's under.
Meat processing?
Yeah.
That was one of my fears and I did uh, ask that before I even signed the lease if that was a permitted uh, use in that zone. And I have been told all along that it is, um, and I. That's why I went ahead with that.
Wasn't expecting to have to address that tonight, um.
Now, do you also do cremations?
Uh, no, we're not allowed by law. Uh, no funeral home in the state domain is allowed by law to perform cremation. Uh, that has to be done offsite, has to be done on a cemetery property and it has to be separately owned. Uh, I cannot legally own a crematory uh, under my license. Um, so the uh, the other fact to this too is. Something that I do think is to take into consideration is Maine is well over seventy percent cremation. We're probably even could be getting closer to eighty percent. Um. The years of having two wakes, you know, two days of wakes and a funeral, those are gone. Okay, they're not, they're not happening anymore. Um, I've been doing this fourteen years and. Uh, the people coming through the door asking for a full funeral. Maybe once or twice, maybe three times a month in this area. Uh, Hope Memorial had about five deaths on their Facebook page and if you read through all five, none of them had services. So will there be services in a funeral home? Absolutely. Not gonna say there won't be. But the direction of funeral service is not to have a large extravagant building where you gather. There are some people that have that and some people that are building that, but they're building that in metro areas where. There is large expendable income and larger populations. People in the Arundel, Bitterford, Saco, Sanford, Alfred area um, are just not. Uh, either willing or wanting to have funerals for ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars. This is what made this property ideal for me because it is small. I can scale what people are looking for and I don't need to also. Charge them what they would typically pay. So this building fits into that whole model. That I'm trying to do.
Lee J, I found it.
You did.
Yeah.
Cause I've been looking.
Commercial service.
Commercial service. I was looking at a personal, personal service.
Yeah, I was going through all of these going.
Yeah.
Okay. It, that answers, it, that answered the question I had, cause I knew, I figured you, you weren't gonna just pull it out of thin air. It had to be something.
No, it was, it was in here. It was. Rather than having it defined as a specific use, it fell under commercial services.
Yep.
To the chair, I have a question. Um, thank you again for having the service um, for and to bring props, possibly bringing it to Arundel. I appreciate that. Um, the septic, you said was um, addressed and kind of you said it and go through. So the septic system is now a possibility to have quite a few people there, even though you said it's not as option, not as often that they have larger services. The septic before was not set for services. It, can you explain to me that, please?
Sure, um, it really gets into, excuse me, so in the septic systems, um, that system was originally built. Um, and as a free home, um, a three-bedroom home. And um, there are certain gallon amounts that are attributed to each bedroom in a home. And it was determined um, through occupancy loads, even if both top and bottom occupancy were full. Um, with people that they're short-term visitors and so the gallon amount of usage for the septic system. Would not total what three-bedroom home would total.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Paul, where are you with uh, coordinating with D O T?
I'm actually not handling the D O T portion of the project, so I can't really answer that. I know that Matt. Has submitted a plan to D O T and and Jeff might know more about that, so we're waiting for it. So Mike, I know it's due, say we do have to. amend the entrance permit.
Uh, my understanding is that we are still waiting on that permit to come through from them. Uh, they are doing some work. They were matter, they were actually at the property uh, about a week ago, taking photos of the roadway. Uh, so I'm assuming at this point in time, they're just uh, still trying to figure out the logistics of that. But we, we don't have an answer from them yet.
To the chair, I have another question. Looking at the existing uh, two-story home, it says existing well and that, and the one that you have and that. Basically, the parking lots over that. So where is the existing, where is the well gonna be moved to?
The parking lot is not over the well?
I can show, he can show me. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you.
So I have a question, Paul. So the entire site is one point five seven acres. Which is approximately sixty-six thousand square feet.
I believe you, yep.
So. More than half. Of the entire. Piece of property is going to be impervious area.
No, I have a total, um.
You have thirty-five thousand, five sixty.
I have proposed twenty-one thousand building deck steps, access and parking, twenty-one thousand total. For thirty-one percent block coverage.
But it says proposed development area is thirty-five thousand.
Yeah, that's the, that's the uh, trees, cutting the trees.
Okay.
Lawn, lawn's considered developed area. So it's not just impervious, a building and pavement is twenty-one thousand.
Okay.
So the rest of it's lawn.
Cause that's a big parking lot. Sixty parking spaces.
Oh, we're talking thirty parking spaces.
Thirty parking.
Thirty parking.
Yeah, six, sixty is pretty large.
Yeah.
But we're talking thirty.
I don't know why I pulled that out of my hat.
That's okay.
Okay.
So we're adding thirty parking spaces.
Okay.
So in total, there'll be thirty-four.
Correct. There's five existing, but because I have that additional handicap pocket. Because you only had one handicap, now we need two handicaps, number of parking spaces, so we have thirty-four total.
I was thinking sixty occupants.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Well, i- is there public water there?
No, as well. So I just asked the question about. No, as well. So I just asked the question about well.
Okay.
I do show the existing wall, the existing conditions, and I'll make sure I label it on the site plan also, so we know.
Yeah.
Uh, where it is in the proposed site plan.
Copy that over. And that's been found to serve up up to what your needs will be. Sixty people.
To me, it has, and I'm talking to Matt. He sees no issue with it either. We got good water flow. It's it's. I don't see an issue with with that.
Okay.
There does seem to be an issue with impervious surfaces and water. Your is essentially doubling the impervious surface area.
Correct.
You're gonna have to have a stormwater study done.
Absolutely.
And depending on how that stormwater study turns out, you may have a problem because you won't have any, you won't be using Phil Labbies.
Or the existing.
The the small detention area that.
I may not be able to use that. That's correct. Yeah. And I may. We'll see how the numbers fly.
Okay.
Yeah, once I do the stormwater management plan for the project, I'll do the pre imposed calculations, and that will be at that cover location.
Yeah.
So obviously, gotta make sure that my post matches my pre, and it may actually involve upon on on site. To make that work, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
That'll be fun.
Paul, were you on this project when it was Sherpro? Yes. Now, I'm recalling something. There was something about distance between. The entranceway and being so close to the building years ago. I it's not, can you help me? Originally, that site had two entrances and we discontinued. We had a shovel something around just to. What happened was they were relocating this entrance because obviously where it is now, the reason it's where it was. Is to have access to an overhead door. So the only way to get into that overhead door would be to have the entrance where it is today. Now we don't need access to that overhead door anymore, so really, we want to move that entrance to the location I'm showing. To make it a lot more direct to the parking area. So we're gonna shift the entrance west. Remove the existing entrance that's there now. And the reason it's there is because we had to have access to the overhead door for the Surf Pro trucks. Yeah, but remember how the. Yep. Let me uh. And of course, the building doesn't meet setbacks, but there was a grandfather.
That's what I that's where I was getting ready to go, is I thought there was some existing structure that they then. Built upon or something along those lines that that. You can see the yellow was in the front yard, so.
Again, this is a this is a big beginning of signage. Would there be signage for it?
There isn't. Yeah, we are gonna there is an existing temporary sign there, and we're all gonna have a sign approximately twenty five square feet. Um, and we'll have pictures of that when we submit that next time. Yes. And well, I don't believe it'll be lit. I'm not sure.
The the planners have lighting on the ground going up at it. Um, and I was pretty certain you guys had some information on it, but it would be sixty inches across and. About sixty inches down, sixty inches and sixty inches.
To a ground a ground sign, basically with uplights.
Yeah, be up. It'd be a black granite sign.
Thank you.
So I hate to pick up Susan's normal thread, but. Will the space be ADA compliant? Will there be restrooms and things like that?
I don't know the internal, but I'm sure Jeff does know the internal.
Yep, so for ADA, anywhere that anybody would need, whether it's a restroom, whether it's entering the building. Will have a ground level right in, so there'll be no stairs that anybody. There is stairs, but anybody who needs a bathroom, there isn't a bathroom that accommodates ADA.
Okay.
Uh, for that, and then the commercial doors that going to the property, one of them. Is gonna be where the garage door is now. It will be a double commercial door. Um, and that double commercial door obviously is big enough, and it's right on the ground for wheelchairs for people to just walk right into the building.
So am I understanding that you're gonna remove the existing garage door and put a double commercial door there?
Uh, yeah, it is. Yeah. Yeah, and then also there's so basically on the front of the building, there will be a a double commercial door. A window and then for fire code, we're keeping all three. Basically, gonna have three doors on the front of the building, all commercial. Um, the two white doors that are there now will come out. There'll be a commercial push doors for fire. So people will be able to push them out. They'll all be matching doors.
We will need to do one. Yes, the question is, do we want to do it now or after we have? The preliminary plans presented.
That's what I would suggest.
Oh, um, so, well, yes. I'm just trying to think out loud here. It is a conditional use, so. You could wait till the next set of plans, revised plans or what have you come in. After you find the application complete, like we're doing with the storage facility.
Right, yeah.
And then and then do your site walk at that time.
I I do, I have to admit, I find the idea that you're going to have. Thirty parking spaces. I I agree with you, by the way, most of most of the time people are now being cremated, but when they have a funeral, they have a funeral. I don't I don't think sixty spaces are enough because you go by hope and you see how many cars are parked there for funerals. That place is jammed.
Sure. Best I can tell you of that is I've done this for fourteen years. Um, I've met, I'd like to say I've probably done thousands of funerals. I'd put it probably somewhere around a couple thousand funerals. And I can tell you that there can be a lot, absolutely. But it does take part of it too of judging the families, judging the type of funeral. There's a lot that goes into it. You can look from the outside and say. Funerals are busy. But if the director who's arranging that funeral knows what they're doing, knows how to work with the family, we're an event planner today. You can call me a funeral director all you want, but I'm an event planner. So to plan the event, I really need to be a good judge of whether or not that building is suitable. Because if it's not, then I'm misjudging it for the family. So part of my arrangements are talking to the family and trying to figure out, you know, what their expectations are. Who this person was, what did they, you know, all these things that come together. There may be times that I look at a family and say, and this would go for any funeral home. Our funeral home, our facility is not suitable for this funeral. Let's find another venue where we can do this. A lot of that, again, goes back to the funeral director and the experience level they have of making arrangements. And planning these types of events. I can be wrong. There is a little bit of margin for error there. But generally speaking, I would stake my experience of planning funerals and events. I have planned funerals where I've had well over a thousand people attend. And I planned funerals where I was the only one in attendance. And so those qualifications would hopefully reassure you that. Uh, if I encounter a situation where I thought that facility was not going to be suitable. Or there was going to be an issue with parking, I would do my very best to negate that. And try to find a venue that would be more suitable for the family.
And and I do agree, more and more people are having cremations, and it's, yeah, it's a much easier way to deal with it.
Yeah, and and Rich, my, I mean, my view on that is that. People, you know, this, what was it? It it came down to the commercial service use. People are gonna be soliciting Mr. Dobson's business based on what they see. And what what service he can provide. You know. No offense to the scale of your operation, but probably the mayor of Bitterford is may not come and be looking to. Attend, you know, or or his family have a have a funeral. At a at a scale, at a size, this scale because of the expected amount of.
Right, yeah.
Visitors that would come. So I think I think that plays into it.
And I think you make a great point there, that again, that goes back to the funeral home and the funeral director. Because I can tell you right now, someone of that statute isn't suitable at Hope, isn't suitable at Bibers, isn't suitable anywhere. Because there's so many dignitaries. I've done funerals at USM because they were so large. Uh, the last funeral that I managed in Portland, we could fit three hundred people in the chapel. Uh, we did funerals at USM because of the dignitaries that we had there. So again, if a funeral director is taking that kind of funeral and putting it into most of the funerals around here. It's not appropriate for that setting.
What is the name of your present? Unit?
Sure. Uh, so on the sign, you'll see it says Dobson Funeral and Cremation Services. I won't get into the issue I had, but I had an issue with that. I've had to change it to Dobson Family Funeral and Cremation Services.
Because I haven't been down, I didn't notice it. That's why.
Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah. No, I absolutely, and I appreciate that question. I. Like I said, I I just say that because it could be confusing tonight. If I tell you Dobson Family Funeral and Cremation Services, you go by there tomorrow and you see the the temporary sign. Says Dobson Funeral and Cremation on one side.
The reason I'm saying that is because I didn't even know that you were there and how long you've been there.
Yeah, so we.
Because I just went through something. So I mean, that's why.
Yeah, we we opened on July first on the use that we've been permitted for, which is basically. I mean, honestly, it's it's a good eighty, ninety percent of what I would normally do, and it's just finding outside venues. If I have people that want a funeral. Um, so I do plan on, I would also like to at some point in time talk to DOT about putting. Signs up a little further away on the roads, let people know they're coming up on it. So that it is more visible to people, because you're right. Um, I have got that that people say, well, we didn't, we weren't by it or we didn't notice it. So I think part of that would be putting signage further back, coming from Bitterford. And then further back coming from Sanford into Bitterford, in the Bitterford. Yeah, that would probably help that out, I would think.
So as the board, what is the next steps for us or what? Just send them on with the notes we've given them?
The next step for us is for you to prepare the the plans. And bring them back in so that we can approve them and proceed forward from there. Paul knows all about that.
So am I changing the use to commercial services instead of funeral home in my application?
Yes, commer- commercial services would be the appropriate designation. Because in in the definition, it specifically mentions funerals.
Perfect.
Parentheses or something?
Oh, okay, good, yeah.
Yep.
But I'm sorry, if I may add, I do appreciate you guys. You know, looking over all of this, one of my concerns when I did find this building was, you know, I was like, oh, no, you know, Arundel doesn't have a funeral home. Uh, or has had one in the past. So that was a little bit of a concern to me, but hopefully, um. You know, I I think funeral homes have always been a centerpiece to a town, not always in a nice way, but in a. A good way sometimes by helping families out. And again, I think once, um. People find out that there, you know, there is a in what you'd also want in your town as a family owned funeral home. Uh, corporations are now starting to buy up and take over funeral service, so I think. If this was a corporation, it might be different, but the benefit to the town of Arundel is they have a local person, a family owned. Uh, business that's doing this, that is really doing this to benefit not only a Rundle but Bitterford. Uh, and hopefully, the funeral home is truly a part of a Rundle, because I want people to know that. You know, we're we're not just coming in to try to to make business a Rundle. I mean, everything that we do, we want to make sure we're doing it for a Rundle and the surrounding communities. So, thank you.
And thank you for that. Do you do you operate other funeral homes under the Dobson family name?
Uh, no, I do not. Uh, this is the first one, and really, probably will be the only one. I'm not much of a, I don't, I have a very lar- um, I'm not much of a corporate fan. I I worked for corporate. Uh, funeral homes in the past, and I I just don't agree with the idea behind it. Um, and that's basically what led me to where I am today. I worked in Portland up until the beginning of this year. And the funeral home I worked at was purchased by another family owned funeral home, but. One that was just starting to grow, and they really want to get bigger and bigger. And I don't want that. I'd rather just be somebody small, take care of the families that want to come to me, offer them. You know, services, but services that are not gonna worry them about the cost. I will tell you that in the industry itself, I have been pretty looked down upon. Uh, over my pricing structure, many of my peers in the in the industry have told me that I'm not charging enough. I should be charging more. I don't agree with that. My mother died in two thousand and five, and we had to borrow money from family and friends to bury her. So my goal is not to make that happen. Um, and basically, we start out around twelve hundred dollars for a direct cremation. Uh, my full burials are thousands less than other funeral homes. I think that's kind of what upsets them, because they don't want anybody too lower than them. But that's not my problem. My problem is just offering a service that I know will support what I need to keep going. And make sure it helps the community.
Do you have any regards with you?
You know, I do, actually.
After the meeting, Marty, after the meeting.
I'm just asking a question.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions for the applicant?
No. Look on this.
Thank you. When you come back, let us know if you want any, if there's any waivers or anything that you that you need.
Exactly. That the other gentleman got. I mean, because really, we never.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, I. I guess what I want, I mean.
Okay. Next item is other business by the town planner. Do we have any?
Uh, we don't have any other business. I just will report to you that I have. And I know the time is coming that we're gonna wanna get down and we can have some of that conversation, so. Um, it looks like next meeting may. Um, well, depends on how it all comes together. It could be fairly short, and if you'd like to. Um, have some of that discussion, I can start bringing some of the easier, what I think might be easier amendments forward.
I I think that would be great, because both the selectman and Keith have said they want us, as soon as we get through something, they want us to. To send it up to them.
Yeah.
Before you came, well. Toward the end of Tad's term, we were getting those things taken care of, but when when Tad first showed up. We were waiting until March before we started working on stuff.
I I don't have the time to do that, so I want to start early as well, so.
We didn't have the time either.
Um, so, yeah, I can now bring those forward to you for the next meeting. Um, and you can start discussing them. I think I have three or three or four. That we can start talking about.
Sounds good. If there's nothing else.
I move that we adjourn.
We're adjourned.